In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity of justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We do up downs a few more times. Check you out.
Yeah.
See how you're doing.
Probably gotta do that about every, what, every hour?
Yeah, well, I take a nap, a couple hours in the afternoon.
Remember, somebody's here today.
All right.
Back check here, still.
He always has a different verdict. All right, I'll call the meeting to order and look for approval of the agenda.
Bernie changes anything, please?
No, okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Through the minutes from September twenty ninth.
I'll make a motion to get through the minutes. Again.
Okay, the first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so approved. General public concerns. Okay. All righty, we're right to you, Beth.
Morning.
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 Uh, I guess I'll start by introducing Ben Ulrich. Ben started with us last week in the engineer's office. Plan is for him to learn as much as he can off of Dave and I over the course of the next couple of years before Dave retires. And his plan is also to, uh, or our plan for him is to take over planning and zoning actually still.
Nice.
Be great.
So this is the West Bend native?
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah. So what, have you had much experience in planning and zoning? Probably not, but building, construction wise, things like that.
Yeah, I've been in construction since high school, so.
Okay.
Twenty four years. Yeah.
The rest of it is pretty much following the rules and the ordinances. Make sure all the setbacks are right and things like that. Well, welcome on board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the official item that I've got on the agenda is to approve the purchase of two vehicles from Mason Motors. Uh, this is for a truck in the engineer's office for Dave and a truck.
I take it Dave's getting a diesel?
Uh, Dave was not getting a diesel.
What's that, isn't that a, what's a turbo max engine then? Is that diesel or not?
Where do you live?
On the one fifty.
On the one fifty? Yeah, two twenty-five hundred and a fifteen hundred.
Mechanical down below the first item.
There's engine turbo max three hundred and ten horsepower. I take it that's a diesel, isn't it or not?
I'll double check, but I don't, I mean, I didn't expect a diesel.
Okay. I just. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
I mean, it, it's just the standard fifteen hundred Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred, uh, LT package.
Even a little gas receptor goes on?
That could be fifteen hundred, probably.
Yeah. Yeah, for his is the fifteen hundred and then for the boat shops for.
Twenty-five hundred. Cause you'd be pulling stuff like that, that makes sense.
Uh, the old pickups we trade them in or what we doing those?
So one of the pickups is gonna get sold over here.
Yes, I thought the courthouse, weren't we gonna do one?
Courthouse, because you guys said that you needed one per, um. We gotta find that group thing.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Second item from the bottom.
It is diesel. It is diesel. Duramax three point oh turbo diesel.
Yeah, I'll double check with, uh. Nate.
It's good.
There's this, yeah, there's not supposed to be a diesel, so.
Okay, there.
But, yeah, uh, we're not trading any of the trucks off. One of them is coming here and the other one will be the additional truck for the humble shop. So every shop will have two trucks or two pickups. And then we'll have three in the engineer's office week, so. One for each.
How many miles are on those older pickups roughly?
Uh, the one that's coming up here is around sixty, hundred and seventy thousand. And, uh, two doors that'll move from boat down to humble to sit down.
Oh, wow.
I think. It's pretty fast. It's one of our older trucks, but.
Mechanically wise.
Mechanically wise, it's fine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And these are all, this, then the money's been set aside, right?
Uh, this is reimbursement from FEMA. We're using those funds for purchasing trucks. They're not part of what's in our original budget, but, you know, we need some inside preserves for things like this.
Um, so we really don't know what the price is on that second pickup.
I'll double check on, uh, the crew cap. It wasn't supposed to be a diesel.
Should it be a diesel?
It needs to be.
Doesn't mean, you don't hold that often.
Fifteen hundred.
Well, that's a fifth, that's a halftime.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't really need a diesel. I don't want to do, we usually wear the interiors out before we wear the motors out.
Yep. Right, table, until next Monday.
Table will bring them the purchase.
Yeah.
Does you guys want the actual price?
Well, especially for the second pickup.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, Nate's on vacation this week anyway, so.
Yeah.
Hey, we'll make the motion then to table the approval of the purchase of the two pickups.
I'll second that.
Okay, any, any more discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then the motion on the pickups is tabled until next week when we get the final numbers. Okay. Anything else, Ben?
Nothing official. We did, uh, we did some concrete patching last Friday. After palpations. And believe we got Oak Avenue opened back up the end of the day on Friday, so.
Okay. Figure out where we're at.
Uh, north of Livermore's lagoons.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's where the, it's not a common lead rule.
No, I don't even know if it's five vehicles a day, but, uh, the east branch, the DuPont River washed it out here in July. Had it closed since and, uh, the river was down low enough that we were able to.
Get the rip wrapped. You just rip wrapped it?
Uh, brought some filter back in to repair the bank and then put some fabric down and then.
Bunch of armor. I think that's what we put upstream.
It is, yeah. We did that twenty years ago and it's the exact same.
Nothing moved.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Good enough.
Anything else for me?
You wear it on your dump truck that misses?
Uh, threw a code on their way up to deliver it on Thursday, so it's sitting back at Reese.
Actually, a love.
So. Well.
But all the equipment was on it.
All the equipment, everything was on it.
Okay.
Under warranty?
Hopefully.
We, we, we haven't got any warranty yet, because we are taking delivery.
Yeah, that doesn't start till delivery date, otherwise it's a year and a half of warranty.
But, I mean, it's great. We've got a brand new twenty twenty-four truck that'll show up in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. All righty, well, we've had discussion on that topic before.
Yep.
All right, good luck.
You.
Thanks.
Yeah, welcome then.
Yep, nice meeting you, Ben.
I know, I know, it's true, yes.
Ben wanted to. All righty, we'll move on down to place on file quarterly report. Orders quarterly report.
Yeah, I saw that copies that I made.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
You can see we collected sixty-eight thousand nine hundred one dollars and eighty-five cents last quarter. And out of that, the county retained the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. With our various state offices getting the forty-seven thousand thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. I did put an additional tape on just because I think it's interesting, um, just to look at the transfer tax that we collect on the sale of property. I starred the two numbers, six thousand is what the county received and then down below the twenty-nine thousand is what we sent to the department revenue. If you add those two together and calculate backwards, because we get a dollar sixty per every thousand dollars of sale, um, which, I don't know, these numbers don't seem like very much, but if you calculate backwards, that's over twenty-two thousand dollars in real estate sales that our county has done the last three months. I think that's
a lot, you know.
You know, a couple were big, were big farm sales, which really adds up fast, but still a lot of, a lot of little sales, so. Um, that's all I have on my report. If anyone has any questions. I will add that the House File ten thirty-one, which is the second modernization bill, remains active for the next legislative session. It passed in the House last April and let's hope it passes the Senate and the governor signs it, um, this coming session. And if you look on page three, that, um, twelve thousand dollar figure would be doubled if we can get, um, to increase the recording fees from five dollars a page to ten dollars a page. Seems to have.
It's been at five dollars probably.
Since before some of the current recorders were even born.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It, it seems to have a lot of momentum and I think, um, even though our original building go through, that would have done more than we had hoped, um, this one is looking promising. So on the recorder's side, um, I think it's gonna happen, but, you know, will, remains to be seen. And lastly, it has been my honor and privilege to serve as the Humboldt County Recorder these past eleven years, but I am about to turn sixty-eight and I plan on retiring at the end of this calendar year.
December thirty-first.
Mm-hmm. Following the example from other county recorders that have, uh, left before their term was up, I would like to request that you appoint my deputy, Nicole Niemeyer, to fill the last year. She will then run for office as an incumbent. Following her appointment, Nicole will hire me to work a few more weeks just to help with the training of the new hire. Uh, you'll not find anybody with better work ethics or customer service skills than Nicole. Um, thanks to Sandy now, you guys all know the process. Um, but I want to make this a smooth transition for the recorder's office. I'd like to see posting in November and new hire happening in December. Yeah, so.
This is something we can't discuss amongst ourselves, because it's not on the agenda. But, I mean, you can sit and talk about it all you want, but we can't.
Right, but if you want to put it on the agenda, I mean, you know, talk to John, have another meeting. You know, I can give you examples of what maybe other counties have done. There's been a lot of them. Um, mostly, I mean, I don't know any that didn't appoint within, um, the office if they wanted it.
What if we just refused your retirement?
Well, I wouldn't be in the office as much and, and with an office of three, you really need a working recorder. So, anyway, I, I wish I was younger when I started this job because I enjoyed it and it's great, but I'm ready for a few changes in my life, so.
Grandkids make a big difference.
Grandkids make a huge difference, especially when they're so stinking far away.
It does, and they have big country ways.
Yeah.
Hard to do that on a weekend.
Yeah.
It is, and they grow up so fast, but anyway, that is it from me.
Okay, I appreciate your service.
And, and, and let me know how I can help or what we, what you want from me in the next steps.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept your report before we.
We forget about it when that.
Yeah. Okay, we have a first and second on their quarters quarterly report. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have home state credits. Place in file the twenty-five ten oh six resolution approving home state credits sixty-five plus and the military exemption disallowance for twenty twenty-five valuations.
These are. Approved last, but I wanted to have them in resolution so that they're documented and so I went through the list of everything for it.
You went through them all already and just through the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
And most of them are just, a lot of property sales, so we're, we're just used to.
And then change in that is so about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to our county.
Well. Yeah.
More than that.
I'm not sure, I didn't look at that because a lot of them have filed for other home states credits on homes that now they're moving into. There's only a unit. You, I'll be stated, I should say.
Well, I'll make that motion to approve and place on file resolution twenty twenty-five ten dash oh six.
I'll second. Okay, this is, uh, we have a first and second on the resolution. Given so, we have a roll call vote. Bruce.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And myself is aye also. So, resolution passes. All righty, that's pretty much it. We got many reports.
I had nothing for last week, but I do have a couple for this week, or reminders. Uh, we have the renewable energy workshop tomorrow night. It sounds like there'll be, uh, quite a, most of us will be down there, just to make sure you post that. Um, Wednesday night out at the Sheldon Park, uh, building, the kids that have been working on their Legos.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
Is it good?
You know, you know, at five, six o'clock, when my daughter said, we're welcome to come out, so if you want to go out and see what.
Little engineers that figured it out.
She just said, sometimes it gets a little boisterous, so be prepared for, they get a little wild, but.
It's kind of an after-school.
Yeah, they do it at six, six o'clock and, and it's been, uh, anywhere from a dozen to sometimes more, so they've, it's been well received and they wanted to thank, um, the conservation board for the the use of that building and, and they've had a lot of fun working out there.
So they, they're not, are they done after this or they?
I, I'm not gonna go on that limb because I think that they, they have other things that they're planning, but I, I think there's a little period there that I'll just wait and have her reply, so.
Yeah.
The other thing is, on Thursday, we have that mobile food pantry, um, at the fairgrounds reminder from four thirty till however long the food lasts, so.
What day is that, Thursday?
Thursday, you know. And hopefully I'll be able to get back, so we can work at once. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, I have no extra meetings?
I, I have any meetings either.
At what time is that, with that food pantry five?
Four thirty. Bring your club board.
Yeah, I'll say.
I'm sorry.
It was nothing.
Haven't, haven't had any changes.
No, it's the same.
Um, Thursday, I come in and picked up, uh, fund status reports from Tricia and I've heard. I went over them, seeing how it's fluctuating between July and today. Orderly report basically seeing how much the influx of taxes has on our budget. Just looked at over and ran comparisons, uh, from July until now and it's, it's pretty amazing how much things move in a short while, so, um. I'm just learning about it. I can't, you can't make a decision until you've got a little more time to look at things and figure out the cycle of them. Um, I mean, Friday for the newly elected officer's mandatory meeting we was gonna have. Come in because it's twenty-five bucks on that one. I'll just watch it on the tradition and, uh, they.
They were having problems. They sent an email that followed up.
Who are you getting that through?
Um.
Ailers and company?
Yeah, Ailers and Company, they had. They're gonna either do it again.
Did anybody get anything or did they just? Okay, anyway, so I hung around for an hour and a half, but that's along the meeting, thinking they were gonna have a webinar after it was over and they failed to do that, so. Then I went up to the Veterans Affairs Office, their office and talked to Wilson for, you know, an hour just to see what he does. Um, see how many people he services, um, just basically get a grip on, because I've never been in that office, I don't know what it does. Um, Saturday, I went to a Vine Stock Arts and Wine Arts Festival over in Peterson, Iowa. The population's three hundred and twenty-one. Last year, the population grew to three thousand. They got forty-one vendors.
Oh, you mean just for the event?
Just for the event.
Wow.
Yes. And it was, it was Waldo people, their main street, they set up the little, little vending things, there was tent, a tent, a tent, tent, all up now, main street. They had a little band there, three people singing the whole time. I was there from eleven to four o'clock. The crowd never, never got small. I mean, usually it ebbs and flows. They had, uh, I mean, it was, they had forty-one vendors and I think, uh, six or seven wineries, um, Soldier Creek was there, uh, from around here, um. Just, it was just an amazing event and, and I, for kicks, just for kicks, I looked up Livermore's population to three seventy-one. They got bigger population than Peterson's got.
Yeah.
So my thought process is if I brought this to one of the small towns and said, hey, you know, would we be interested in, in maybe trying this? I mean, just inject their economy or something.
Yeah.
It'd be a huge boost, but anyway.
We used to have that wine walkout at the, um, that was always fun.
How many, how many vendors was there? I've never been.
Oh, there is probably.
Museum?
Yeah, the museum, probably maybe max twenty, I would say, maybe twenty. Might be more than that. It was fun. We always enjoyed it, but.
So what'd they have for vendors?
Um, anything you can think of. They sold anything, um, Edward Jones was there with the booths.
Oh. Well, get the old retirees, you know.
Oh.
Anything you think of, I'm not, they had jams and jellies, um, Spencer, the radio station up in Spencer put on, they were, uh, Spencer Media Group, uh, which is procure oldies, camp, PR, K M R R, K I C D. Um, they, they were all there and they pretty much, they sold the glasses, you just went up there, bought a glass and you went around to the vendors and they, they would give you samples of anything and everything.
Lost it on the empty glass.
Well, they had little things that hung on there. That's what they do, yeah. That's what they did on the.
It was just an amazing thing.
Same thing.
I just stumbled into it and I, wow, I took a bunch of pictures and I thought, wow, the small towns here would just, you know, that would be something to tell them, but.
Yeah.
Um, that was, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I wish this last week didn't do anything, but week before I was at Midas and I brought that up as that, uh, newly elected official meeting after day.
Yep.
Midas wanted to provide that as a service and our board said no.
Midas, they can't get nothing done and they want to do that.
Totally told them, I says, you already can't get out your work yet, why would you take on more work? So we, the board was pretty unanimous on that. I think they've gotten pretty clear direction in this work sense. But, um, it's, I guess some of the COGS are providing that at a discounted rate, you know, to the members. So that was about the only thing I attended that week, so. Anything else for the board?
I have one question and that's to do with Sandy, Sandy's position. Uh, I've been asking there are a couple people that are interested in the position of her, um, chair, I guess, for one year after. What is the step process? Do they need to sign up? Do they need to?
They could.
Request?
Provide a cover letter, a resume and references and submit it to us. Um, probably your last day is fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
By the fifteenth or sooner the better, you know.
You probably want to have somebody pick before I, yeah. I mean, if you could start in.
Depends on if there, there's if there's, I, I'm just guessing, there's this much interest in it, someone's gonna petition to have an election if they're not picked.
Yeah.
That's just my guess.
You have to have, what, five hundred and some signatures for that though?
No.
I thought, I thought that's what Trish should.
Yes, like.
That's just the ward.
Five hundred.
No. Usually it's, it's a percentage of, it's maybe as home.
Yeah, there's probably.
It's, I mean, there's quite a few.
Think around what the seats are.
It was five hundred and eighty signatures for a petition, but I need to ask the Secretary of State if that is since we're a plan three elected, would be, um, I would, yeah, it's probably less because it probably goes by the district.
Probably goes by the percentage of those.
The last election.
Yeah, the last election, because I don't think it'd be any more than it'd take to get.
It goes by, yeah, the general election.
It goes by the general election.
Which I was surprised.
Mm-hmm.
But it would also go by the ward, I would think, because see, why would you have people petitioning when you're not in that ward? But, but we need to find out.
If it goes according to that population or how, um, it's them today.
Well, those are the things that, as, I mean, we're six today.
Six weeks away. I have five more meetings.
It'll be here before you know it. And we just need to make sure that whatever steps we have to do, would, we take care of. So, so that that is a smooth transition.
Yeah.
And the other thing was, if we don't do a special election, then it would be handled by the three.
Electoral officials. Yeah, the recorder, the auditor. Right, sure.
And that would be some type of interview process, some type of?
It doesn't really state your best piece.
I'm guessing they're.
Draw the head of that, actually, me, my last actual days.
Most everybody gets their letter of resumes, you know, that type of thing, that's. So.
It would save time if we just had to, but we can't just jump to an election, can we?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think that, the, the way I read it, you first can, you can say, we're not gonna do that and then we're gonna go to election. You, you know, they don't have to choose someone, the way I read it. But it's their option first. Okay.
Well, I, I'm confused. They don't have to choose someone. How would we replace someone?
By, by a special.
By a special election, if there's three to five people.
But didn't that cost about six, seven thousand somewhere there?
Yeah, at least.
But the timing program, it might be really.
Well, if you did that when you, you put both down in my position of it.
Yeah, there's a case there. We just have someone who's gonna be leaving or have to replace.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe just have a special election for both offices and. We got to.
I guess that's what was running through my mind. You're gonna get somebody appointed sitting here and then have a special election and then, who knows? Uh, who's gonna win the election?
Well, there was one more, next till February, uh, March, you have to have papers turned in. I was gonna have to have papers turned in anyway, or somebody would.
Yeah.
And then you'd have the primary in June and then the general in November to take over the following year. Honestly, I think.
Honestly, I think appoint, doing an appointment would be the most economical for both positions for the county.
Well, I guess that's the reason why I'm saying that we have to have a date. So they would tell us by whatever day or. You know, first part of a week after, I don't know.
Then I went through this weekend and highlighted all of my awards, I, because you guys had mentioned about having.
Well, you don't get out of them, you gotta.
Yeah, you gotta.
So I'll be, I'll be with.
You can zoom everyone.
I could. Um, so, no, no, I can do that, but I just, you had said something about after when I'm gone, though, if we don't have anybody appointed. You know? And I can't, I mean, I just highlighted, so there's food pantry, because it used to be ministerial was food pantry, but now that's.
Yeah.
It's food pantry board, ministerial, let me just, it's board of health. Um, building families, um, daycare advisory commission, which is K D C A S, de categorization. Um, HIPAA, which we've never, I have never met with HIPAA, I mean, I don't know.
If we ever have a deal, you're gonna get called.
Called, right, okay, I will, and I'll, I'll, I'll be more than glad to help with however it can be when I'm gone. Uh, ministerial, mental health, which is now Allison's. Uh, liaison, the, the, detail, the, the, the. Yeah. I'm gonna have enough coffee yet today, and then safe and security committee, that was Lonnie and Lee, so. And we really, that was kind of after that, um. And we've never really met. I mean, because it's, it's a safety, safety committee is kind of taking that all.
Taking that over, yeah, probably.
You know, the, the, and that's the chair and the vice, because you guys have kind of taken, so that, I mean, I highlighted, but really. That's not really.
So not too bad.
So no, on prevention, okay, prevention is another one, I don't remember if I watched, it used to be called the alcohol. My ministerial, that's every month, food pantry.
Daycare, K D C A S.
Prevention, daycare. D cat was once a quarter, but now we've been meeting every month, just because. But I think it's gonna go back to where it's gonna be.
You said the ministerial.
This once a month.
At the hospital?
Ministerial meets out of the hospital now, so that we can zoom. Because they have a better Zoom function.
Well, the last, when I was doing this, they had. You meet at a church, then you get to the church, well, then they were having a funeral, and then they forgot to let anybody know, so then.
Right, and that's why we went to the school, but then when the summer came, it kind of.
It closed up.
Yeah, kind of messes that up, so then that's when, um, uh, Kristen Sewell said, let's, we could do it at the hospital. She's, we have Zoom function, and that works really well, having Zoom. And we've actually had really good attendance with ministerial, we've worked really hard, yeah. We just got to get some of the, yeah, we just got to get some of the smaller communities, we'd love to get their pastors to come. But that's a work, we're work, a work in progress, because ministerial now is kind of turning more into. How can we, I mean, there's just some, there's such a great need, and we're doing a lot of crisis things. Um, so, yeah.
Should we plan on having a work session that week?
I think so.
And figure out what we're gonna do, we already got it taken for.
Bye.
Good for you, we're not done yet, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Um, that's a good idea, the work session, gather some more information on the process and.
Yeah.
And, um, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So, because we have a lot of interest in that. So. People, people need, need to know what to do, when.
They have to be in that ward or that district in order to prevent.
Correct, correct.
And the boundaries did change a little?
A little bit, yeah.
Times is so.
Yes, kind of went for the boundary, went kind of, I thought crazy.
It was stupid.
It was just, it went down, it shifted right, Trish, kind of shifted down, because it was. I had east of the river, and then now it's from Goch, when we're.
The river cuts it off.
Well, honestly, part of, she still has a little bit.
No, I have still part of the, yeah, I do.
Yeah, she has.
It's at the, um, because Rick, we, we border each other, it's, um, goes to the US Bank. The park where God, what's, I can't think of any of it.
Is that the one you're talking about?
No, where Goch is.
Oh.
The statue. Bicknell Park, so it goes from Bicknell Park to, I think, US Bank. And then south, I think five or six blocks. And then back.
Yeah, because there's.
I know, I explain things really good.
I, I was just the, the statue.
Yeah.
They're pretty statues.
All right, well, beans, we're still in session, I'm gonna guess Ben's got some good numbers for us.
Uh, the, the numbers are the same, but if you go to page nine, where they actually spell out the window sticker of the truck. It is a five point three liter, uh, Eco Tech V eight, and the, the front page that we're looking at is all of the available options that you can get. That's, I was confused, I was like, I didn't expect these whole stuff.
All right, beans, we, he is back, and then probably I'll get to some order, because it'll be an ordered truck.
There'll, there'll be ordered trucks, uh, estimated delivery is beginning of February.
All right.
Three months, three, four months out.
Now, does anybody know the rules on something that's been tabled? Can we untable it?
I make a motion to cancel my table.
Resent.
Resent, thank you.
Resent, that's where it is.
Resent, yeah, cancel.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind the tabling, motion on the pickup purchase, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is off the table, now I'll look for a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Chevy Silverado twenty five hundred. The gas motor. And also the. Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred. All from the twenty five hundred forty eight thousand seven hundred for the truck price. And a headache rack installed for five seventy five, and mud flaps installed for three hundred. And for the price of the Chevy, where, twenty twenty six Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred. Purchase of. Fifty thousand eight hundred with a headache rack installed for five seventy five, and mud flaps installed for three hundred.
I'll say it. Okay, well, first and second, any more discussion in the papers? All in favor? Any opposed? There are none, motion carries. Thank you for running down there, that's right now. Alrighty, anything else we need to discuss? So we'll gather more information on the replacement of Sandy. And Diane, we're gonna have a work session next week after our meeting to discuss. Everybody good?
Yep.
It's good.
I guess I would just say that anyone that's interested could reach out to Trish's office.
Yeah.
So that we know can. Get a estimate.
Because I'm sure that'll, you know, we'll still need that resume and cover letter and all that stuff.
We don't have a standard form or anything to fill out of any kind, do we?
We have an application.
That'll work.
On the website.
Perfect. Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mike. First and second, any more discussion on adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned at nine oh seven.